This regular meeting of the Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Commission of February 28th, 2018. A printed agenda is available outside the hearing room and a copy of the full agenda, including the staff reports, is available at the front of the chambers with the clerk. The Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the room. If you parked in the parking garage across the street to the north, the gate is open and no parking coupons are necessary. Out of courtesy for those attending this meeting, the commissioners and the staff, cellular phone usage is not permitted in these chambers during any portion of this meeting. We will appreciate your cooperation. Please note, the Planning Commission action is final on Agenda Item Number 4.1, Special Permit Number 18004. Any aggrieved person may appeal final action of the Planning Commission to the City Council or the County Board by filing a notice of appeal with the clerk within 14 days following the action of the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission action on all other items is a recommendation to the City Council or the County Board. The first item of business is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held February 14th, 2018.
So moved Finnegan.
Second Edgerton.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Okay. Beckius?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Hove?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Core?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
The next item of business is the Consent Agenda. Items on the Consent Agenda will be called at the same time and will not be scheduled for a separate public hearing unless there is a request from someone wishing to speak or at the request of a commission member. I will ask Jerry to read all of the Consent Agenda items into the record. Once those items are read, she will ask if there is anyone wishing to speak. If you wish to speak on an item on the Consent Agenda, we would ask that you stand and state that item. That item will then be removed from the Consent Agenda and scheduled as a separate public hearing under Section 3 of today's agenda. All items remaining on the Consent Agenda will be voted upon in total with a motion for approval. Jerry, will you please call the Consent Agenda?
Yes, there's only one item on the Consent Agenda under text amendment. Item 1.1 is Text Amendment Number 18003. To amend Section 27.02.160 of the Lincoln Municipal Code Regarding the Definition of Office and Repealing the Same Section of the Lincoln Municipal Code as hitherto existing. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed on this text amendment?
I don't see any.
Is there anyone here wishing to speak on this item? If so, please stand and state your interest.
I don't see any. I'd entertain a motion.
Move Approval, Hove.
Second, Beckius.
Jerry?
Okay. Beckius?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Hove?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Core?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
There are no requests for deferral, so we will now proceed to public hearings. The staff will make a brief presentation. The applicant will then be requested to present his or her testimony, followed by those who wish to testify in support, followed by those who wish to testify in opposition. The staff will then be given an opportunity to respond to the testimony and then the applicant shall have an opportunity for rebuttal. Each person testifying should state their name and address and shall have five minutes to speak unless additional time is requested and granted. The timer will go off after four minutes, then you will have one minute to wrap up your testimony. The Planning Commission will vote immediately at the close of the public hearing unless the commission votes to defer action or continue the public hearing. Jerry, please call the first public hearing item.
Okay. Item 4.1 is Special Permit Number 18004 to allow a residential healthcare facility serving up to 20 people on property generally located at 4141 South 56th Street. This staff recommendation is conditional approval. This is final action on this item unless appealed to the City Council within 14 days. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed?
Yes, Jerry. I was at a College View Neighborhood Association meeting where they advised us that they were moving to this location potentially.
Okay, noted, thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Commissioners. Desi Redman, Planning Department. This is a request for a special permit for a residential healthcare facility serving up to 20 persons for a 24-hour peer counseling facility where it is strictly voluntary to participate in the program. It is located at South 56th Street. See on the map here, South 56th Street and Pioneer Boulevard. Subject property is just to the northwest of that intersection. Currently existing on the site is a building and some parking which is accessed off of South 56th Street. The applicant is not proposing to change anything on the exterior part of the site. South 56th Street is a arterial street which is appropriate for this type of use of a residential healthcare facility. The subject property is partly in the R2 Residential Zoning District and partly in the R4 Residential Zoning District, which a residential healthcare facility is permitted via special use permit in those zones. A total of 12 parking spaces would be required, five for the residents and seven for staff. And this site does have that many parking spaces and a few more. And I just wanted to touch on the definition of a residential healthcare facility shall mean a building to be used in a residential nature licensed by the state if required and is included but not limited to the following types of facilities: assisted living, memory care, convalescent home, or group home for 16 or more people. And this special permit would be considered a convalescent home as it would be serving people for a combination of care, counseling, and treatment. And also to touch a little bit on the history, this is a continuation of an existing special use permit for a residential healthcare facility. In 1994, there was a special permit granted for a residential healthcare facility for serving up to 30 people and five staff. And that residential healthcare facility permit did also include a daycare facility portion to it, but that is not being requested with this special permit. So that's just a kind of a summary. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer any, and the applicant is here too, yes.
So initially, 1994, it was approved for up to 30 people. This is for up to 20, so it says it was amended there somewhere in 2012. Did the number of residents go down at that time or why is it being reduced?
You mean, why is it being reduced today?
Yes.
Okay, so it's a different business that is coming in to the facility and so they don't need that many people and that's why they're just requesting for 20 people, up to 20 people. So it was a different business in 1994 and then when it was amended, and then this is a new business. So up to 20 people is what fits their needs.
So what was the amendment in 2012?
It was to clarify actually how many people were permitted with a special use permit. And so it was still the same business, but there was a little bit of clarification that was needed from the 1994 special permit.
Okay, thank you.
You mentioned licensed by the state if that's required is part of the definition. Do you have information on what the licensing is that would be involved with the current use or the proposed use?
Sure, so from my understanding, all the staff that would be onsite is required to be certified, but I will let the applicant speak to exactly what is required for their facility to operate by the state.
Sure.
Could you speak very briefly to some of the higher density uses that we also see here in the map that you've used?
Sure, so there are some, some to the south, there is a condominium facility that's located kind of southwest, and then there's also a senior care facility here that is on South 56th Street as well. And so just to the south, there is some higher density. And then kind of around to the other sides, there's some two-family and single-family that would be a bit lower density.
Thank you.
Does he have a question about the property owner is relinquishing some property for this right-of-way for 55th Street? But I mean, 55th Street doesn't go through anywhere near here, so I'm kind of confused about this.
Me too, I couldn't tell. We were talking 55th, 54th?
Yeah, we're talking 54th Street, which runs to the west of the property. And if you can kind of tell on this map, the property line is right here. And so if you look to the north of Lowell Street, the right-of-way is here. And so essentially, in order to get the right-of-way to line up with Lowell Street, we asked the property owner if they would be willing to voluntarily dedicate 30 feet of the right-of-way so that way, or 30 feet of property during this application. So when the time does come and the city wants to improve that road, because currently it is a gravel road, we wouldn't have to purchase that property at that time. So we asked if they would voluntarily dedicate this for this land use application. And so here's mayor of the street, and you can kind of see it turns right here. And so essentially, we're hoping that this would eventually be an improved road. This isn't saying that the city is going to come in there and improve that road tomorrow. It's just in the future, hopefully, we will at some point get to improve that.
And my understanding is that the property owner is different than the person that's applying for this permit?
Yes, ma'am, that is correct. So currently, the applicant that's here with us tonight is representing Mental Health Association of Nebraska, and so they're actually the ones applying for the permit. But the property owner has to sign the application, so they are aware of what is happening on the property.
And just so I'm clear, I'm looking at a walking path to the west of the property, is that correct, of the improvement?
A walking path, are you talking about like the circular? Yeah, so they have some amenities out there that is on their private property. But I guess the applicant can maybe speak for sure how they utilize that, but yeah, it's on their private property.
Thank you.
Okay, applicant.
Good afternoon. My name is Casey Moynor. I'm the Executive Director of the Mental Health Association of Nebraska. We are asking for a special permit to occupy and lease the property at 4141 South 56th Street. We currently run Kia House and Hanu Home, both in neighborhoods. Hanu is currently in the same neighborhood association, College View. We serve individuals that are living with mental health and substance use issues and some of them dealing with trauma and have been incarcerated at times. And our goal is to promote wellness and recovery, and we are peer support, which means there are no clinical staff on staff. We are all people with lived experience of the same types of issues. And we believe that it's part of our recovery to pay that back and give back to our community. We've been very involved in the neighborhood associations. We participate in their meetings. We have built very good collaborations with community partners, so we have access to behavioral health providers, we have access to treatment programs, we have access to medication management, but also housing, food nets. We are very knowledgeable in the resources in this community, and our goal is to be that person that walks alongside someone who may be struggling and again, promote wellness. There are other facilities in town that, you know, do get a lot of calls for service from the Lincoln Police Department. Our houses are not one of them, and hopefully you had the opportunity to read the letter that they submitted. If you have any questions, I don't know how much information.
I'm familiar with Kia House and really think it's a wonderful asset.
Thank you.
And I learned about it from Lincoln Police Department, who told me. And so I used to work for Leadership Lincoln and we would have our classes go visit. Is the clientele the same at Kia House as it will be in this new facility?
It'll be a mix of clientele that is similar to Kia, but then there'll also be, Hanu Home is funded by the Department of Corrections. So again, a lot of our folks that deal with mental health issues are ending up incarcerated. And so the primary focus is still mental health and substance use, but some of them will have correction backgrounds.
Thank you.
I had asked the question previously of Desi about licensing. Can you share with me any kind of licensing requirements that will be in place for this facility?
Actually, we don't have to have any licenser. That is because, again, we're not clinical staff. So because it's peer-based, we're not required to have the state license.
Thank you.
Do you plan to make any improvements or changes to the property or put fences or things like that?
Actually, I've been working with some of our neighbors here behind me, and they are requesting that a fence be put up in between the properties. Since MHA is leasing, MHA Mental Health Association is leasing the property, I don't anticipate that we would pay for that unless it is an option to buy in our lease. And if this is successful and we do decide to buy the property, we would be interested in putting up a fence just to be able to have that privacy for our neighbors too. But otherwise, no, there would be no, I mean, as far as just painting and that type of stuff. So we pride ourselves on being good neighbors, so we will have flower gardens and gardening and we will keep the property up, especially that big lot, so.
Casey, can you tell me, so I know that you have Hanu Home already close by, not too far away. You're going to vacate that house and move everything over to this location, is that, am I understanding correctly?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And so basically the same model that's been going on over at Hanu Home, just moving over to a new location?
Yeah, Hanu Home has about, well, it's like a three-year waiting list, longer actually. And so we just want to be able to provide that support to as many people as we can and this facility would allow us to serve more folks. And again, law enforcement is very involved in it. They've walked through the house and they do come over and get to know the people who are there and the staff, and that will also continue to happen.
Could you speak to, you said sometimes the police will come over, get to know people. Could you speak to how users will use the home itself? Is there, you know, programming onsite, what have you? Could you explain to us how you would use the facility and such?
Sure. The biggest thing that we do is provide peer support. So we share our own stories of recovery with people who often, you know, come out of places feeling hopeless and alone and isolated. And our goal is to be that person, again, to walk with them and just be that support. We also, we provide programming, it is all voluntary. The reason we don't have incidents in our home is because everything is voluntary. If they don't want to be there, if they're not interested in recovery, then they don't have to be there. But we provide what's called Wellness Recovery Action Planning. It's a plan of action that they create for wellness. A lot of people who live with the things that we do are often only asked about our illness and the symptoms and the sickness part of it. And we really like to focus on what wellness looks for us, how do we maintain it? And we do provide those programming. We also provide what's called RentWise. RentWise is education on renting and all the ins and outs of what that looks like. A lot of folks struggle with renting and being alone in their places. So during this transition for them, we really focus on helping them be successful renters in the community once they leave. We also, because the MHA main office is housed in Region 5 systems building, we have access to all of their trainings that they provide. So people, we're knowledgeable in other programs that they can take and refer them and get them into those.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a cap, Casey, on how long an individual can stay at Hanu Home?
Right now, it's 90 days. We were, we still want to kind of stick to the 90 days, but what we're finding is that some folks really do require more time than 90 days, and we want to have that flexibility and keep it really individualized. So again, the purpose of it is recovery, and we're not in the business of keeping people. We are in the business of helping them gain the skills that they need to be successful. But we do want to allow them to stay longer if that would be necessary. When you have somebody who may have been in an institution from the time they were 17, 18 years old and never been an adult on the outside with no supports, they've never punched a time clock, they've never paid a bill, they've never signed a lease for anything. And so that, we are finding, takes more time to help develop those skills. And so we would want to be able to do that here at this place.
Any other questions for Casey right now? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Testimony and support?
My name is Destiny Camusow. Do you want my address?
Please.
6905 South 89th Street. I'm currently the reentry coordinator for the Mental Health Association, so I do oversee Hanu. I'm the previous coordinator of Kia House. I've been with MHA for over eight years. Before that, I was a participant on the Lancaster County Adult Drug Court facing felonies for manufacturing, delivery of a controlled substance. I was 21 years old when I was charged with these crimes and just ended a very long addiction to meth. I never wanted to be a drug addict. I actually wanted to be a basketball player, but that was not where life took me. The last couple of years of my using, I would sit around and daydream, and not about being rich or having a big house or nice cars. I would sit around and daydream about going to sleep every night and waking up every morning and going to a real job and just having a normal life. All I wanted was a normal life. So when I got on drug court, I took full advantage of treatment and everything that was offered to me and went to a lot of meetings and did a lot of service work. And what I learned during this time was that I really liked helping people. Helping others had helped me the most. It made me feel good about myself, it gave me purpose. So when I graduated Adult Drug Court and began working in recovery as a peer, someone who's been there, done that, it changed my life forever. I never imagined I would be doing what I am today. I get to go to sleep every night and wake up and go to work every morning, and I get to help myself by helping others. I get to assist people in finding and maintaining not only recovery but their wellness. Myself and all of our staff get to be the hope to the people we serve that you can and you can recover and you can change your life. We are the examples that it is possible. We provide housing for up to 90 days free to them while they work with our employment program to obtain and maintain employment. Also, our outreach program to make sure all their basic needs are met, including identification, food, clothes, hygiene, and when they're ready to transition out of Hanu, our outreach program assists them in finding their own safe, affordable housing. We try to assist in making sure they have everything that they need so that they can focus on what's important during their transition back into our community. The greatest thing about peer support and peer services is that we aren't Monday through Friday, nine to five, and that even if they move out of Hanu, we are still here to support them and assist in any way we can. I know with the media and the population we serve, people have concerns, but I can assure you that we've never had any violence at our houses. We've only tried to improve the neighborhoods we have our houses in. We like to get to know our neighbors, we like to be involved in neighborhood events. Approving our permit for 4141 South 56th would allow us to serve more individuals and provide them with the resources, supports, and programming they need to be successful. We're already in this neighborhood and think it's a great neighborhood for people to feel safe and comfortable. Thank you for your time and consideration.
You serve on the Suicide Prevention Coalition, don't you, Destiny?
I sure do.
Thank you for your service, yeah. Thank you for your service.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tessa Demers and I live at 2840 R Street, Lincoln, Nebraska. So I've struggled with my own mental health and behavioral health my entire life, before I was even old enough to understand why I had the struggles that I had, which led me into an addiction that began at about the age 12, 13, and eventually led me into several incarcerations, the last being at Women's Correctional Center for, the Correctional Center for Women in York, Nebraska. While I was there, I was introduced to RAP. Casey talked about the Wellness Recovery Action Planning, and it taught me a lot about self-awareness and how to take care of myself, and like she said, it really focused on that wellness piece. I'd been in a lot of different counseling therapies, I've been in different institutions for my mental health as well, and none of that stuff really, I mean, I learned a little bit from all of it, but none of it was really the answer for me. I didn't do very well with being told what to do, and RAP gave me the opportunity to make a commitment to myself that if I was tired of feeling this way, this is what I was willing to do about it. So it helped me find balance in my life. And I don't know, like today, I can honestly say it's one of the most beneficial tools in my recovery. I've been clean for almost four years now, and my mental health is pretty, I don't live on an emotional roller coaster, I kind of keep it here now. And so with that, I did parole out, and when I got out, I paroled home, which is in Pawnee City, so a rural community. I had a pretty strong parole plan, I was doing everything I was supposed to be doing, attending IOP, working, rebuilding the relationships with my family, my children. But I just felt like something was missing and I couldn't quite put my finger on what it was. But I remembered that when MHA came in to facilitate RAP, they had talked a lot about the importance of having really healthy supports. They talked about that they take volunteers. The most important thing that I gained from that was hope, because these were people that had been through some really similar experiences as me and were doing really different things with their life. And so I reached out to them and I asked if, I called Destiny and I asked if I could come up and volunteer. And she said, "Well, can you come tomorrow?" And I lived an hour and 20 minutes away, but I did. I came the next day and I spent the day volunteering at Kia House, and I had found what it was that I was looking for. My cup was filled, I spent the day talking with people struggling with some similar things, what kinds of things worked. worked for me when I was in that similar place, what kinds of things hadn't worked for me, that type of stuff. And I've been with MHA ever since. So I was a volunteer for a while. I volunteered at both houses. Then I became staff there. Now I work in the real program. So I do outreach work in our community where most of our referrals do come from the Lincoln Police Department. And I go out and I make contact with those people and try to get them plugged into other resources and services in the community as well as just being able to share my own lived experience that wellness does happen and we can find that and maintain that for long periods of time.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you. Any other testimony and support?
Good afternoon. My name is Amy Jackson. I live at thirteen twenty-nine Washington Street in Lincoln, Nebraska. I am here today to share with you some of my story of hope and recovery with the help of my peers at MHA and why I feel strongly about obtaining permission for special permit, SP one eight zero zero four at forty-one forty-one South Fifty-Sixth Street. I spent most of my life in utter chaos, addicted to drugs, struggling with mental health issues, and many years in and out of jail, and ultimately a prison sentence in two thousand and eleven. I was once the formerly incarcerated, the crazy one with mental health issues, and a drug addict that didn't know how to stop. As soon as I was released from prison, I was introduced to the Mental Health Association of Nebraska and peer support, and it changed my life forever. I received so much love and support from my peers at MHA that it allowed me to make the decision to stop using drugs, stop committing crime, and to be able to finally talk about my mental health issues in a way that it was no longer shameful or taboo. Working through all of those issues allowed me to become a better person. It allowed me to regain control of my life and start to rebuild it from a very strong foundation. I am now employed full-time with the Mental Health Association and have the privilege to give back to my peers, provide hope that was provided for me, and make a difference in my community. I get to see lives changed and miracles happen every day. The people that we will be serving in this new building deserve the chance and opportunity to enter into recovery and begin a life filled with purpose and hope that they too can recover. Thank you for your time and if you have any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other testimony and support?
Hello? My name is Michael Mountcar. I live at twenty-three twenty-five South Fourteenth Street. When I was nineteen years old, I hit and killed somebody. I had been drinking and because of that, I spent one thousand six hundred and fifty-eight days in prison, which was, you know, I had to pay the consequence. After that, I ended up in crisis center a couple of times, the psych ward, all that stuff. But when I, when I did, when I did parole, the stipulation of my parole was a transitional living house, a sober house. And so for me to get out, I had to pay one thousand four hundred and fifty dollars as a deposit and then a hundred dollars a week. And not, not a lot of people can do that. Let's see, and then they also had two, sorry, I'm kind of nervous. They had two, two per room there also, so that was tight quarters where the Honu would be the single. So the house that I paroled to, the transitional living house, there were people drinking there all the time, multiple times I found methamphetamine on the kitchen table. I didn't feel safe there. There wasn't, it wasn't staffed. There wasn't any support there. And out of the seven guys that lived at that house when I did, there's only two that didn't go back to prison, myself and another, so not very good odds there. So now, having worked at MHA, I'm certified in the state of Nebraska as a peer support and wellness specialist. And I've seen the success of many men and women that have come out of Honu. And that evidence, it's, it speaks for itself. I know that if I, if I would have had the option to go to Honu, if I would have known about it, I would have taken full advantage of that. It would have made my struggle so much easier. You know, when, when you get a transition back into society with a peer that's been there and done that, you know, walking along with you, and that probably would have had a bigger impact on the other five guys that got sent back to prison in the house that I had lived in. So anyway, that's a little bit of my story and how I see Honu, so thank you.
Thank you. I do have one quick question for you, sir, if you could. Thank you for coming down and speaking today. We surely appreciate it. You said you were certified with the-
With the state of Nebraska as a peer-
Could you tell me about that certification, sir?
Yeah, so it's a forty-hour class that we're required to have.
What types of things do they go over there?
Well, it's, okay, so it's a peer support and wellness specialist certification.
Okay.
And so you learn everything, you learn basic concepts, you learn how to work, kind of work with people. You, when I took the training, the biggest thing I got out of it was learning how to move forward, learning how to be able to move forward and move towards something, so.
Beautiful. I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
Oh, you're good. I just-
I was, I was interested.
Okay, yeah, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Any other support, testimony and support?
Hi, my name is Corey Matley. I live at eighteen twenty Prospect Street, apartment one. My journey started about twelve years old. I was, sorry, I'm a little nervous, but my, journey started about twelve years old. I started using cocaine and then it led me into methamphetamines. I was pretty good about hiding it all through my childhood, because I was a child then, you know. All the way through junior high, high school, I, I was, I hid it from my family, you know. They finally figured it out when I was about seventeen. They kicked me out. I was on the streets for a while. You know, I, I made really bad decisions in my life. I got involved with gangs. I got involved with dealing drugs, all sorts of bad things that I shouldn't, shouldn't have done. I got sent to prison finally, after I've been in and out of jail many, many times. I got sent to prison in two thousand and eight, the first time. I did a year in there and I thought, when I was in there the, that first time, I thought that that was it, that my life was over. I didn't want to do this anymore, you know. So when I got out, I went right back to the same neighborhood and I didn't have the support or didn't, I didn't know what to do, I didn't know who to turn to, and went right back to the same things that I did. And so I did that path for a little bit longer, for maybe a year, and then I went right back, back into prison. So I did that little prison sentence again and once again, I thought I could change and it turned out I didn't. And so, so I went back to prison a third time and this time I really was done. I actually met two people that came in to do the Wellness Recovery Action Plan and it totally changed my life. They showed me how to be well. They showed me how to, to do what I needed to do to succeed in life. And like, I started actually listening and I needed, I found the support I needed to succeed in life and I started being a role model for other inmates in prison. I started handing out applications for people to sign up all the time because I was so excited about this class. It was, it was the coolest thing I ever heard of, coolest thing I've ever been in, you know. It was, it was, it was just like, every time I went, I was in prison and every time that I went into this room, that's the only place I felt safe, is with them, you know, it was a pretty amazing place. I just, I felt like I was at home again, you know. It was, it was a place off, off the prison yard that I felt safe and comfortable and I could speak and, and I got information and things, well, tools to succeed in life. So I went through that class and I got asked to come back to be a mentor and I, I was, I was super, super excited about that. So I went back and was a mentor and, you know, I found really, two really, really good friends out of that class. And I was actually in the RTC program in prison, which is the Drug Treatment Program. I went through that program and what, which is really cool is that these people, these two people that did the class, they came and they actually, at my, my graduation from the drug program, they showed up and surprised me, you know. That's, that's really, that's a lot of support there, you know. I never had that in my life, ever. You know, it's, they're amazing people and so they actually, she, she told me that she had a place for me. I didn't want to go back home, back to, I'm actually from Omaha. I didn't want to go back to Omaha and I was scared, I didn't know what to do, you know, I mean, I didn't want to go back to that, where I came from, because I already knew what was going to happen if I went back to that, that way. So she told me about the Honu House and so I was really excited about that and that she said that she could probably get me in there, help me get in there. And so they did and I got out in November of last year. When I was in that class, I said I was going to be one of them. I remember, I said, I want to do what you guys do, you know, that's, that's, that was my dream. And so I got out in November and to the Honu House, the greatest place ever. So I mean, like, there's just so much support there, I can't, I can't even explain to, express to you how much support, like, they taught me how to, how to be a, a person. They taught me how to live life. They taught me how to make appointments. They taught me how to, to be on time to appointments. They taught me how to, how to get a bank account, taught me how, like, use a cellphone again, you know, everything. I mean, the only thing I ever knew is, is, is the street life, really, you know. There's just so many different scenarios that could have went wrong, but this place, with the, with the support and everything and it's just amazing. I started volunteering at the Kia House and I just, I loved it, you know, I just, I couldn't get enough of it. I got a job right away at another place. I was working, I got a, I got a car, you know, I got my driver's license. My daughter, my oldest daughter, I haven't, I haven't seen her in eleven years and I got that relationship back with her because of this and it's, it's, I can't express to you how that, that makes me feel, it's, it's amazing. And so a couple, like, was it a couple of months ago now, I got hired on with MHA and I'm actually working at both houses, Kia House and Honu House, and it's, it's my dream job. It's a, it's, you know, it's, 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 best thing that's ever happened to me, I can't even, I could never picture me doing this now, probably a year ago, you know, I can't believe where I'm at today in my, in my recovery in my life. I'm starting college, the twenty-eighth of March, for Human Services. It's, this, it's, I have a new family, you know, all my family's in Omaha, but I have a new family here with MHA, so. But if you guys have any questions?
What, what kind of employment did you find when you first graduated from Honu Home?
I was actually working at Culvers.
Okay.
So.
Great.
I just want to say, my son had told me to read this book called, or Tribe, and the author says that the only thing people want is to be necessary, and it sounds to me like you are being very necessary.
Thank you.
There you go.
Great. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lucas Allen Jackson. I live at fourteen oh one Pawnee Street. It's just a block down from Kia House. I also volunteer there. I'm also Amy Jackson's little brother and I found out about Kia House from Amy. Before finding out from her about Kia House, I didn't know that it, I didn't know that it was a, a transition place that it is today. You couldn't even tell. It looks just like a normal house and I never knew until she told me. And there's an AA building like two houses down and you always see traffic in and out of there, vans pulling up and stuff. But originally, I thought that was just a normal house, you know, with normal people living in it, so I didn't really see the difference in, you know, it, housing five to six people, you know, that were coming in and out of substance abuse and things like that. So, yeah, I'm speaking also not as a volunteer, but as a neighbor of Kia House, and I think that the percentage of people that transition out of these, these living facilities, the percentage of them going back to prison is, is way lower than if they didn't have these opportunities. So for that, I think it'd be a good reason to grant them the space that they need to house the people they need. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Laura Crabbe and I reside at thirty-three thirty-three Portia Street. I don't usually do this, so it makes me a little nervous. And I have lived with mental illness for over twenty-five years of my life. Of course, we don't want to talk about my age at this point either. But-
We'll just pretend you're twenty-five.
Right. Gosh, I was young when it started. And I would say that the addiction has probably followed right along, most of it, whether it be a desire to escape or a desire to have control when I felt so out of control. Whatever the purpose was for what I was doing, you know, it's regardless, it doesn't matter now. I have been sober for eight years at this point. And the mental health and the addiction doesn't discriminate. I came from a good family. It doesn't discriminate. I have a high education. I have multiple college degrees. It doesn't discriminate. I committed a lot of crimes. I did a lot of horrible things to people I loved. Most of the time, I wasn't caught. I'm reformed, but I'm still a criminal, but I'm reformed. And you can be. And it doesn't discriminate. It happens to everybody. It hits this person not, and not that person. It's like a tornado, but you can recover and you can reform. I had, you know, I was sick for a long time and, and then I went back to college and I got another degree. And then I got sick for a long time and then they gave me two years of ECTs and there goes that first college degree and so, and then I found MHA. And I was like, wow, I have a purpose here. Somebody wants to listen, somebody wants to hear, somebody wants to give it, you know. And the, the whole point, they're amazing. I just shake and they're amazing people. By the way, I'm a, now I'm a benefit specialist for MHA and I'm also peer support specialist. And I'm also the health and safety officer, so I do a few things and I'm glad that I'm with them. And they help a lot of people and they'd like to help more and I think they can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Sadara Loughlin and I live at sixty-seven twenty-one Benton Street. I want to tell you a little bit about my story and how things started with me with the Mental Health Association. My family and I, we were homeless three years ago and we were living at the lake out at Wagon Train. And I got into fresh start and I decided, I was working at the time, but I was stealing from my employer and I decided I didn't want to do that anymore. I didn't want to live that way of life. I've never been to prison, but I should have been for the crimes that I've committed in my life. I've been in jail and stuff, but never incarcerated in, in a prison. But- But so I was like, what do I want to do? You know, like I want to do something different. So I quit my job, like I said, because I wasn't doing right by them and I started volunteering at Kia House. And I got an on-call position with them. And I worked at Kia for a while and then I transitioned over to Hanu when Hanu opened up. And it's allowed me to, because of the health insurance and the, the things that I've obtained through employment with the Mental Health Association, it's allowed me to find my wellness, to see a psychiatrist, to see a therapist, to, to make sure that I'm well in order to take care of myself and my family. And to keep us from ever being homeless again, I hope, you know, because that's the big deal. But I, I just wanted to tell you a little bit about my story. I don't think I have much else, but I think it'd be a really good, really good thing if this was put into place. So that's all I got.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other support and any other testimony and support?
Good afternoon. My name's Kara Magdans. I live at 841 West Stockwell Street here in Lincoln, Nebraska. And I am an employee of the Mental Health Association. I've been with MHA for 12 years. So I have seen our new programs come into existence and I've watched them succeed. I've watched our tribe grow. When we first started with the Corrections Grant, I had a little bit of stigma towards that population. I wasn't real familiar, so I had some preconceived notions about what that's going to be like and I had some fears. But what I realized through that is that people are coming out every day. They're coming out every day without support. They're going back to the things that they used to do that kept them sick, that kept that cycle, you know, of, of not being well and, and making bad decisions, whether it's, you know, the drugs or the, or the crimes or whatnot. And over the years of us serving people, I have really opened my eyes to how we can help. People want it. People want recovery. People want something different. They're hungry for it. I've seen people come in as participants in the program, move to volunteering, they're staff now, they're spreading, they're spreading the wellness. And they're just, you can just see the hope in the, in their eyes that there is something out there for me. These people believe in me. And we do, we believe in people. I'm also the program coordinator for our supported employment program, which is the HOPE program. It stands for Higher Opportunities Through the Power of Employment. Everyone that comes through the Hanu Home, or they don't even have to be at the Hanu Home to get the services to help with employment. So everything we do is wrapped around how are you gonna be successful as you keep moving forward? And work is key to that, you know, you don't have to go back to the things that you used to do to make money. We'll, we'll walk through that fear with you and, and help you learn to punch a time clock, how to be a good employee. You know, why you don't show up two hours early thinking you can clock in when that's just not the way it works. So we've seen people, you know, move forward, get cars, get apartments, you know, get on the right track with the right medication. You know, we help them get connected with that. You know, sometimes they're coming out with, with nothing, no resources. And, and we help them get connected with the wonderful programs we have in this town. And we're just kind of helping them connect the dots, being there along for the journey. And it's not time limited. So people can come with us and get, you know, get that first job at, at fast food, work through that, get the next better job, you know, work their way forward and become productive taxpayers. Everybody we serve is, is working and they're moving towards better employment, finding that healthcare for themselves, finding a new neighborhood to be in that isn't the old neighborhood where drama happened to them. So I, I really felt compelled to just say, you know, I did have some preconceived notions. And thank goodness I was put in a, a position where I, I, they're not there anymore. You know, like I said, people are coming out every day without that support. And if we can support more people, I just think Lincoln's going to continue to be a healthier, more vibrant community that people are attracted to because of all of these reasons and the great support and other programming that we have. So I also had a little insight on the, 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 the actual, like that path in the backyard. It's actually now kind of all overgrown, so there's really not a path there anywhere anymore. It was just kind of a dirt path I think people exercised around. But we plan on mowing it, making it look better, because right now I don't know how many years it hasn't been mowed. So we're planning on doing those type of things, you know, being good neighbors, improving our environment, making a good presence, you know, and, and helping just break down the stigma of people that have had a really tough journey. So if you have any questions?
No ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other testimony and support? Any testimony in opposition?
My name is Ote Whitney and I'm the CEO of the Lexington Assisted Living Center. That's that property exactly south of the subject applicant's property. The address is 5550 Pioneer's Boulevard in Lincoln. I don't live there. I live in Denver, 521 Madison Street in Denver, Colorado. It's not exactly in opposition, but it's not exactly in support. I fall right in the middle. It's, we have a license for 104 bed assisted living center. Our mission is to help folks at the lowest income levels we can. We do primarily work with folks on Medicaid, substantial number of folks on Medicaid, 80% probably of our building. So our mission is to help folks who've also reached a place in life where they can't take care of themselves the way they'd like to and they need somebody to help them do that. And we have the skills and the licensing and the staff to do that. We come from the same cloth in that regard. So we're hardly here to object about the mission, for heaven's sakes, of the Mental Health Association. We are here however, to talk about that perception, those preconceived notions that we've talked about. We had those. When you sit in Colorado and you hear that your neighbor is going to be a mental health organization, when it used to be Cedars, which is pretty simple, you worry about that. You do your research and you see that there are folks who've been in prison. There are folks who've been on drugs, may still be on drugs. We worry about all those things. We came out here and we did a lot of research to their, their credit, Casey's credit. She and her staff have helped educate us on who really will be staying there, not living there, not being treated there, but transitioning there. It's helped a lot for us to see that. And so it has allayed our concerns about the, the preconceived notions that we had. I will say however, that preconception is still going to exist with our residents and our staff and the folks who are coming to look at our building to lease. And so we have some concerns about how to address that. One thing we will certainly do is work together with them. It'll be good for both of us to work together. So we've already proposed those kinds of things. We were going to suggest that they could come over and shovel the sidewalks for us. Just kidding. Was a thought however. Well, there you go. There you go. So the two issues that we do have, they've already addressed. Casey mentioned them here. One is, is the fence. The fence only provides a physical separation that creates a different perception of what could otherwise be a negative perception. We will probably put that fence up. We appreciate that she has, they have the lease. They don't have the option, they have an option, they don't have, they don't own it. So they can't agree to spend the money to do it. But she has said, and, and we appreciate that, that if we build a fence and if they buy the property, then they would sure consider reimbursing us or working with us in that regard. We take her at her word for that. We appreciate that. And so I, I don't suppose that goes on a special use permit like, oh, asterisk, by the way, if and when, if and when, if and when, then they will, you know. So I don't expect that. I just appreciate their goodwill and agreeing as opposed to just saying, no, next. So it's been wonderful working with them in that regard. The second piece relates to folks walking through our parking lot. When Cedars was there, we had issues of folks coming east on Pioneer's, turning into our parking lot, then going through our parking lot into the Cedars then parking lot. Because you've got to ride in, ride out on 56. So you can't go to 56 and go north. You can't get there from here. She's agreed that they will on their, you know, their agreement when folks move in. Let folks know that they cannot walk through our parking lot. They can't flip cigarettes into our, you know, ashtrays and on our ground. And they can't drive through it, which is all we were asking for. We have folks who are out there walking and with walkers and wheelchairs. And frankly, some of the other folks walking, drove through pretty quick. And you know, that was, our job is to make sure our, our residents are protected as well. So it isn't in opposition. It isn't in support. We appreciate what they're doing. And of course it will be supported and we'll support them, they'll support us. So we think that's fine. We appreciate the two things that they've, have already agreed that they will work with. So if there are any questions, I'd be glad to answer them, but.
Thank you for your efforts and working though together. Really appreciate it.
You're very welcome. We're very glad to do it too. It's very important for us. Pretty hard to be that far away and just say, well, someone will take care of it. I'm not suggesting you need a third category either, like, you know, also ran, you know, in favor and opposed and also rans, but that's us.
Any other testimony in opposition?
Hi, my name's Jackie Domer. I'm the president of the Pioneer Grove Homeowners Association. If you go to the map, there's 10 individual, well, there's five duplexes. So there's 10 individual units that sits directly in front of, well, just about where it's circled on that walking track.
If you point to it, we'll see it.
Okay, right here is, is the walking track. And this right here is my duplex. So my bedroom window butts right up against this property. We are a 55 plus community. We have out of the group five single women. That is all, you know, 55 plus. I personally just lost my husband in October. I see what they're doing. I understand what they're doing. I have a son in, in corrections. I have a next door neighbor that's in corrections. I understand all this. That doesn't mean I don't feel threatened. I personally would like a fence, you know. I know that's not going to solve 100% of the problem. I just think good fences make good neighbors. So that I particularly would like to see. And I'm like on the same wavelength as Oak is. I understand that they're doing a good job in all this, but when we bought the places, they weren't there. And last year was the first year that our place is raised in value. I know if I turned around and went to sell it after they move in, it's not going to. So I would particularly ask that, you know, that there is a way of keeping off our properties. The bus stop that they will be using sits right in front of one of our, one of our units. If you go, let's see, right here up front is where the bus stop is, number 53. And that is the bus stop that most of them will be using to get to work. So they have to stand basically on our property to do it. So that is a concern as far as that goes and we would like, you know, cigarette butts, things like that, any problems to be taken care of. But my main objective is the fence. So any questions?
If there was a fence built between your home and the subject property, then the access to the bus stop would be?
Well, they're still probably going to have to go around on 56th Street and go the sidewalk in front of the Lexington and around the corner. Because it would be awfully hard to come the other direction.
Yeah.
So.
Do any of your neighbors use that walking path?
It's basically on their property. So no. Before the Cedars Home for Girls was there and it was a oval gravelled, walking exercise path. And there was some of the girls from there that used it, yes. They never extended the circumstance to our neighborhood, so. But. Anybody else?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Other testimony in opposition? Okay, we'll move on to staff questions. Anyone have any staff questions? I don't think we have anything for you, does he?
Good exercise.
Applicant rebuttal. Do you want to come up and say anything?
I just, I just want to say that I do appreciate the relationship that we have with the Lexington and the, and the people, the neighbors around us. Our goal again is to be good neighbors. We didn't get where we are and we didn't become as successful as we are by being bad neighbors. And I respect what they're asking and of course we would want to do all we can to make people feel safe and comfortable. And we would extend our offer to have them use our walking path if they would like to. And we will be shoveling and, you know, responsible for those things. And my vision is that, you know, if we see somebody with a walker and groceries, that we're opening the door and that's how we learn to be good neighbors. So we will do all we can and we are leasing for one year. And that is because if it does become a problem, our work with law enforcement and the neighbors, we will address those. And if it becomes not something we want to do, then we won't, we won't re-lease it the following year. If it's successful and we're able to do what we hope that we will be doing, then we will hope to buy the property someday and, and be able to help as many people as we can.
Casey, can you speak to what kind of, what, what's the typical job that when they're first transitioning? What kind of jobs do they get hired at? Because I know we've heard a lot of testimony today, but a lot of them work for MHA. Can you tell me what else the neighbors can kind of expect, you know, as far as jobs?
You know, we do, it's an evidence-based practice-supported employment model through SAMSA, which is the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Agency. And our goal is competitive livable wages. And, and to, again, for people to be successful, they have to be able to earn a living. Unfortunately, when they first are being, coming out of facilities, a lot of times they're getting two jobs to be able to do that. And, and you know, the, the entry level jobs, the jobs that maybe we started out at 15, 16, 17, people have to do, go through those developmental stages, even if they're starting later in life. But we have been very successful. Thankfully Nebraska's 2% unemployment rate. The demand for workers is there. People on average within a week can find employment. And they're finding all kinds of things. Right now, of course, with spring coming, the construction jobs are going to be opening up. There is fast food, but we also have people who have degrees. And you know, we've had people at Kia that are lawyers, nurses. I mean, like one of the people speaking, these things don't discriminate. So a lot of them are finding entry level jobs, but then a lot of them do move up and earn livable wages.
Great. Can you also tell me to, and this probably kind of follows that same path, but do a lot of them ride the bus? Do they, you know, kind of maybe, you know, if one of them has a car, they, you know, share, give rides to one another? What kind of ridership do they do on the bus?
Yeah, it, it is a lot of public transportation or Friends or some places employ, you know, like Kawasaki. So if there, if there's more than one or two of them, they'll car, carpool. And then they do work at, at buying cars. One of the people that came up here to testify, he bought a car while he was at Hanu. It's, it's something that we hope everybody can be able to do, but it, public transportation is what's most often used. All the staff do have vehicles and like it shows we have adequate parking for that.
Could you speak to circumstances in which you may remove someone from a, a house?
Yeah. What we do is when somebody comes into the house, we are very clear about what the expectations are. They sign what's called a guest agreement. It is no different than if I were to enter your home and, and the respect and dignity that we show each other when we visit each other. The way that we word it, we do not kick people out. And that is because when you say, when you tell somebody to get out, And that is because when you say, when you tell somebody to get out, you're often going to end up with defensive people and it doesn't work so well. So we, we let them know that they're choosing to leave because they didn't, they're choosing not to abide by the guest agreement. Which I know this sounds weird, but believe it or not, when you put it back on the individual for the choices that they're making, you get less pushback from that. And the, the things that they would be asked to leave for would be putting somebody else's recovery in jeopardy. So if they bring drugs onto the property, it's very uncomfortable for them to do that because law enforcement does come. And so most often that does not happen. I mean, if, if people are going to use drugs, they're not going to bring it back to a place where there's a high chance of you getting in trouble for that. So, but bringing drugs on the property, hurting somebody, we've never had any assaults in either of our houses, but that would be a reason they would no longer be there. But most, most of it's just, you have to be able to clean up after yourself, take care of yourself. You have to be there voluntarily, you have to want what we have. And if you don't, then there's no need for you to be there.
Over the course of the Kia House and the Kona, I,
Kona.
Kona, sorry, excuse me, thank you. How many people have you served? Would you guess, just guesstimate for me?
Unduplicated Kia, there's over 700 people. We see those folks, I mean, that's unduplicated, so we see a lot of them often. And Hanu, there's yeah, 80 people that we've served so far.
Okay. And to this point in time, no need to, that you can recall as you stated, no need to remove a party due to physical violence or, or anything of the sort?
No. In, in the years that we've been doing this, like I said, there's never been any assaults. There's never been holes punched in the wall, there's never been chairs thrown, there's never been absolutely anything. And that's because we do treat people with dignity and respect. And like I said, it's for people who want to be there. And so if they, if they don't want to be there, they don't have to be.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Casey?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I entertain a motion.
Move approval, Beck, yes?
Second, Finnegan.
Question.
I'll start it. I just want to thank everybody for coming out that was moving.
Yes, thank you for everyone's testimony. I think we all appreciate it very, very much. I think that the, the use here makes sense. It's on an arterial, surrounded by higher density usage. I can appreciate the reputation that the Nebraska Mental Health Association brings along with its projects. I can also appreciate the potential concern for neighbors. I, I, I believe that, that we will be making good neighbors here and will vote in support of the project.
I would also just like to thank you for your testimony today. And I think it's a testament to your strength as individuals, as well as your program, that you've come from a destructive behavior to what I think is one of the most productive things you can do as a civically engaged person, which is participate in the public process. So you should be proud of yourselves.
I'm going to support also and no one passed out. And you, it was, thank you for being here. I think Kia House has proven to me that you can be really good neighbors. And I think you're filling the need that this community really needs. And I'm just glad to say yes to it, so. And thank you for your well-reasoned comments about being good neighbors. I really appreciate that too. And I think by working together and because it's been proven that they have been good neighbors in other neighborhoods, you'll be fine. So if not, I'm sure we'll hear about it, so.
I am, I've had the, the benefit of getting to know Hanu House because they, when they first came into the College View neighborhood, they approached us and they've always been very upfront. And they've helped us deliver newsletters, they've, they've been great neighbors for us, so. And I just want to say, I'm going to get emotional, but I think you all are so brave for coming up and testimony because I still get nervous. I was up there the other couple of weeks ago testing and flying city council and I still get nervous even though I'm on this side now, so. I appreciate you guys are good neighbors and I think this is a very beneficial service to the community. And I think it's great that you guys are expanding because we need more services like this that are, you know, give the support that the people need. So I will be supporting it. Jerry?
Okay, this is for the conditional approval of Special Permit 18004. Beck, yes?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ho?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero. And I would just remind that this is final action by the Planning Commission unless appealed to the city council within 14 days.
At this time, if there's anyone else wishing to speak on an agenda item? Okay, well, we'll adjourn.
Thank you.